Good evening. At this time, if you would, please silence your cell phones and be advised that these proceedings are being recorded. If you desire to address the City Council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak form. They are available at the entrance and present it to our city clerk. Speakers will be called upon at the appropriate time. I've also been asked to remind each of you when you're speaking to make sure that you're speaking into the microphone so that those at home and those here tonight can hear you. This time, we will call to order the City of Grand Terrace City Council. City Council is a successor agency to the Community Redevelopment Agency and Housing Authority. This is our regular meeting for May 28th, 2019. And tonight, we will have our invocation offered by Pastor Daniel Lee of the Grand View Baptist Church. And our pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Sylvia Robles. If you would, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us go to the Lord in prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you, God, for gathering us here this day. And Lord, just thank you that you watch over and you keep our great community, Lord, over your watchful eye. And God, I'd just like to lift up prayer for every member that is here today, knowing that, God, all authority in heaven and on earth, you have granted to each and every one of us, Lord, in where we stand and where we sit in glorifying your kingdom. And also, may we just lift up prayer, God, for all of our first responders, police officers, EMTs, firefighters, and all the staff, God, who continue to watch over and to keep our district safe, Lord, and our communities just safe for all of us, God, to just enjoy and to keep. And God, just allow us in this time to trust in you, knowing that, Lord, you are not just the author of life, but the author of history, knowing that, Lord, any changes, any great benefits, any things that we have been granted, God, any blessings in all parts of this town that we are stewards of, Lord, you have granted to us. So allow us, God, to always humbly come before you in spirit and in truth, knowing that in your love, we will continue to fight the evil, fight sin, and fight, really, ourselves against the wrongdoings of this world, Lord, and allowing us, God, to be before you, who always serves us, who always grants us, lifts us up, to do what's righteous and what's loving. Thank you, Heavenly Father, and in Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
In this postmemorial day, please join me in the pledge to our country's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Lee. Thank you, Councilmember Robles. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Hussey.
Present.
Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson.
I am here.
Mayor McNaboe.
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have quorum.
Thank you. Tonight, we have a few special presentations, and the first one we will begin with is for a homeowner here in town who has been, is being congratulated tonight for the landscaping that she has done in her yard. Her name is Charlotte Bernor, and I'm going to have Councilmember Allen talk a little bit about why he's bringing forward this opportunity for acknowledgement.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So my inspiration for doing this came from a, excuse me, came from a conversation I had with Director Molina some time back, back actually when I was a planning commissioner. And I haven't forgotten it. And one of the things that I learned from her was that, we were having a discussion about code enforcement. And one of the things I learned from her was that most of the calls to code enforcement come from neighbors. And the significance of that, to me, was that we have a mechanism in place for us to penalize residents for not meeting a certain standard or for not meeting our code. But we don't have a mechanism in place to recognize those who really put an effort into making something that benefits not just themselves, but their neighborhood, their community, and our city as a whole. And I drove through our city, I've driven on each of the streets, I did it during all this campaigning, and I've done it since. And I was struck by this particular residence yard. The first thing that I noticed was that she is so dedicated to it, I would pass often, and she would be out there working in it. But everything about this yard complements everything else. It's such a picturesque, almost like a painting. And it elicits such a scene and a feeling of serenity and peace, calm, safety and security with all of the, not just with the vegetation, the trees and that, but with the statuary that goes along with it, sends a message that this is a safe and a comforting and a welcoming place. And so with that said, I'd like to ask Ms. Bernor to come forward, and the mayor can read the citation.
All right. It's actually a certificate of acknowledgement.
Our certificate, yeah. Thank you.
Citation, sounds like we're penalizing her. And this is presented to Charlotte Bernor in appreciation of your exceptional care and pride in your landscaping, design, good use of plant variety, texture, color, and overall attention to detail and consistent care of your property and landscaping. And it is presented to you this 28th day of May, 2019, and it is signed by myself and my council members. Also tonight, we have a representative from supervisor, County Supervisor Don Rouse's office, and she has a certificate to present to you as well. The council would also like to have a picture with you if we can. Would that be all right?
No.
No?
No pictures.
No pictures, okay.
I prefer not to. I think it's really nice of you to recognize me for this, and I know that there are a lot of people in Grand Terrace that would do the same thing if they had enough time. I have a lot of time. I'm disabled, and I don't work, and when I'm not traveling, I'm working in my yard because it means something to me. And my neighbors, some of them have come over and helped me sort through rocks to get the weeds out and stuff, and I really appreciate this. But I know there are other people that, had they had the time, they would be as dedicated as I am.
Well, I appreciate the work that you've put into it.
Thank you.
And I'm going to let Councilmember Allen present this to you. I'm also going to ask Heather from Supervisor Rouse's office to come up and read her certificate that she'll be presenting to you on behalf of the supervisor.
So on behalf of Supervisor Don Rouse, the supervisor of the County of San Bernardino, State of California, does hereby congratulate you for receiving the City of Grand Terrace Homeowner Landscape Recognition. We appreciate your hard work and dedication to the beautification of your community. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
This is from the city. Here's a nice lapel pin, if you'd care to use it. And for all those days that you spend out there, here's a nice water bottle to keep being used.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Robles?
I'm really pleased that Councilman Allen's doing this. This is something that I also wanted to see in the community, and I'm just really impressed that you did this yourself. It's just really impressive, and I hope it's, these are inspirations for our neighbors to step up to the plate and improve our community. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so our next presentation, are we all here? Okay. Our next presentation goes to a group of young engineers, and we will begin by calling up Matthew Johnson, the Grand Terrace High School Engineering Pathway Lead. I'm going to ask Councilmember Allen to talk about this one a little bit, and then I'm going to ask Mr. Johnson if you will talk a little bit about the pathway. So Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last month, early last month, I was asked to go over to Grand Terrace High School and be a judge in the senior high, the senior engineering project showcase. And this is a group of students who are part of an engineering class, and they each took on a project, or they formed teams and took on projects. There were about 10 different projects that I judged, and I mean, it was a wide variety, just let your imagination go. There was some convertible shoes, there was an armored wallet, a modified wheelchair with improvements, and a massage pillow. I mean, there was a lot of great ideas, but there was one that I really thought stood out, especially in the aspect that I am involved in with the municipality and city, and that was a traffic light that some students had designed with some safety features in it that I thought were pretty unique, and they actually are here to present their project. And so, take it away, Mr. Johnson.
First of all, thank you very much for inviting us down. It's a pleasure to be here in front of you. In schools now, they always see there's a need for having hands-on education, getting the students to build and actually get their hands dirty, if you say. We offer a pathway. This is our sixth year having the pathway. We have, this is our second graduating class, so they have four years that they must complete, where they actually learn how to CAD. So we have students that can create and do computer-aided drawing. They get an idea, a little bit of about each engineering field, mechanical, civil, they're doing college-based work that I did when I was in college a long time ago. And at the end, if they stick around, we started with 40, and we had 25 that ended up completing all four years. Their final year is a senior project in which they have to do research and create and look for a problem, and then create a prototype for that problem. And, I mean, we've had a lot of support from the community. They go out and ask, and they did surveys, and we really appreciate, and I'd love for them to explain what they did.
All right.
I think we've got Elizabeth Harris, and it looks like Fabian and Eddie are both here, right? Okay.
So our project is based around traffic lights. Our goal was to improve the quality of safety at intersections because a huge majority of accidents actually occur at intersections. So we also have a working model here for you. What our project involves is a ring of lights that encompasses the original stoplight design. And what it is, is a visual counter. So before the light would change colors, it would count down slowly, signaling right before it changes. This would help drivers know how much time they have, this would help improve their reaction time, and it would help drivers with decision-making abilities, so they would know exactly how much time they have left before light changes. For example, maybe some of you guys have pulled up to a yellow light and not known if you should hurry and get through it, or if you should slow down because it's about to turn red. So this would help prevent that by letting drivers know exactly how much time is left. It would let you know if it had just been green and turned yellow, or if it were about to turn red.
Very nice.
Thank you. We did a lot of research, we also put out an online survey and got over 120 responses that helped us in the making of this design. We were able to use our 3D printers in class to print the blue box part of our design. And then we were also able to use the computers we have available in class to do our coding and our knowledge that we've learned in the pathway.
That's impressive. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
I'm wondering, is it designed so that it can be used with existing traffic light systems?
We're working on that right now. We are hoping that we would be able to have this just be like an addition that we could add to traffic lights. That's one concern that we're working through right now.
Okay. Any questions? All right. Now, Councilmember Hussey.
You guys came a long way since last year in the Oreo cookie thing, huh?
Yes.
You know, that's pretty impressive. I think you need to get with Mr. French and get some of those traffic lights installed here, because that's one of our biggest problems and issues here, you know, people running traffic lights and stop signs. But, you know, what made you come up with the idea? You just saw the accidents, or, you know, just your mom ran a red light or something? I don't know, you know?
Well, we're all new drivers. I drive myself to school every morning because my parents have work, so I've just noticed a few intersections where I think this design would be really helpful. I've seen a few drivers in the morning, very stressed, running red lights and stuff, and I just want to make sure a town's a safe place. So, yeah, we all have a personal experience with witnessing accidents occur at intersections, or my neighbor was involved in an accident at an intersection that could easily be prevented with our design.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It would be nice to be able to be a beta site for that, Mr. French. All right, we have not only City of Grand Terrace certificate of acknowledgement for each of you, and it will have your name, and it says, "In appreciation of your commitment to the ongoing pursuit of knowledge in the field of engineering, presented this 28th day of May, 2019, signed by all of our council members." But we also have Supervisor Rouse's field representative has brought for you each a certificate, and we also have Assemblymember Reyes's field representative who has certificates for you as well. And so I will invite each of them to come forward and read what their certificate says, and then I'm going to invite you to come over here and have a picture with the council, if you would. All right. So, Daniel, if you would come forward.
Hello, everybody. Mayor, council, city staff, and the community, thank you for having us here today. On behalf of Assemblymember Eloise Reyes, we wanted to come by and congratulate these young people for doing a couple of things, right? The first thing that's very important is when we have individuals that are so, that are young, that are in high school, that can start becoming to identify problems, but then also find solutions. I think that's how we create the process to solve some of our major issues in our society. So congratulations on doing that. And I wanted to read the certificate from Assemblymember Eloise Reyes. It states, "The Honorable Eloise Gomez Reyes proudly joins with the City of Grand Terrace to recognize you for your exceptional leadership within the development of your traffic light warning device. Your commitment to solving problems through technology demonstrates your goodwill to our community. I hereby extend best wishes for a prosperous future filled with continued success. Signed, Assemblymember Eloise Gomez Reyes." And I'll present the certificates to you right now. So we have Elizabeth, Fabian. Congratulations. Congratulations. And I also would like to bring up Mr. Matthew Johnson, who has a certificate for you as well.
And Heather, if you would come up.
So definitely a long way from when I was in high school, what the kind of projects we had. So it just, I really would like to commend the, Mr. Johnson, for your dedication, and I have a certificate for you as well. Not yet. I have a certificate for you as well, but just your dedication to the students and finding projects or inspiring the projects for the students. So on behalf of Supervisor Rouse, she wants to commend you or congratulate you on your senior engineer project and commend you for your hard work and dedication. So, Eddie. Oh, sorry. Congratulations. Congratulations. Yeah, I'm, yeah. Congratulations. All right, sorry, I could have handed you yours. Congratulations.
Now, if you would, please, join with me and the council members over here for a photo up. it is my privilege to join the City of Grand Terrace and recognize your contributions for the project on traffic light timer warning system for drivers. This achievement is a reflection of your exceptional effort and commitment to your overall team goal. I commend you and wish you continued success in all your future endeavors. And this is signed by Connie M. Leva, Senator, 20th District. And Councilmember Robles suggested that perhaps we could use that for the timing lights as well. All right, our next presentation is a homeless outreach proactive enforcement program update from the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Office. Lieutenant Wolf.
Good evening, Mayor. Council, members of the public. Lieutenant Doug Wolf. Tonight, well, let's take a step back. You know, over the last couple of years, we've seen a slight, very slight uptick in the homeless issues within our city. So to combat that, we actually reached out to the HOPE team. They came in and trained a couple of our deputies to kind of figure out ways to help these folks that want help, and they were successful at doing that. And we have seen some progress in that, but the situation isn't over. It's an ongoing effort that we need to continue dealing with. So today, I thought it would be a great opportunity to bring in Deputy, forgot my name. Mike. Here we go. To talk about the HOPE program. So, thank you. Mike Jones.
Mike Jones.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. So as we know, kind of go through a PowerPoint at the same time, homelessness is an extreme, complex social issue, impacts community, our quality of life, but also a fine line between homelessness as that criminal issue and the social issue. So over the past several years, based on some studies around the country and things, it's became where the community really thinks it's a law enforcement issue to solve, quite the difference, because jail and criminalization doesn't really solve the homelessness. It does for a short time, if there's a criminal aspect, to transport them back and forth to jail, but they're back out in the community. And what we've learned over the past five years of doing this, that a lot of the folks have some tie to the community that they're in. So if they're homeless in Grand Terrace area, they have some type of family connection, grew up here, things like that. So while homelessness is not a crime, some of the public conduct that they do, public intoxication, loitering, trespassing, panhandling, some of those things that the homeless are most likely to be involved in are ways to address those issues. So in 2015, I'm sorry, 2014, Sheriff McMahon implemented the HOPE team to improve quality of life throughout the county of San Bernardino. We're a countywide program. We help all of our cities, contract cities, partner with all of the police departments within the county. But there's three of us for the small county of 20,000 square miles also. So we try to get around the county on a regular basis to link those people with programs. The mission is to balance proactive outreach with connecting that homeless population to resources, help them transition back into mainstream society with the ultimate goal to reduce recidivism, incarceration, and the current costs associated with homelessness. Kind of how we work, this is a camp that used to be right here off the 10 and the 215 under, on Caltrans area. So we work throughout the county, working with agencies across the country to form the program. It was instrumental to have behavioral health on board. So we have a behavioral health team that was created that works with us, goes out in the field with us. We have an alcohol drug counselor that goes out with us. We have veteran affairs groups that go out with us to connect the vets with resources, contact the homeless, do, get some information from them, and try to connect every single person, if they want help or not. The goal is that long-term assistance and those reoccurring contacts. Some studies across the country with law enforcement doing this, Colorado Springs in particular, they average it to 75 contacts before somebody would take assistance. They also dropped homeless by 75% in a five-year period before some of the new case laws and stuff that I'll talk about shortly. We also have community resource officers, like Lieutenant Wolf mentioned, people trained at our stations to work with us, to connect us with the individuals, because we're not in this, every city day-to-day. So knowing where those calls for service or where those encampments might pop up, the patrol level is dealing with those on a regular basis based on calls for service that's generated in our reporting system, and we could see those calls, we work with them to connect them with resources. These are some encampments throughout the county. You know, more rural areas see the bigger encampments. A couple of those are in the high desert, so there are more land, more areas to encamp. A lot of times down here, we see people, you know, hunkered under trees and things like that, that probably abatement issues would solve the people coming there, much like Caltrans has done along the freeways, you know, raise the trees and have less cost of cleanup and homeless in those areas. California ranked number one in the nation in homelessness. 2018 point in time count, the point in time count's done in January of every year. HUD issues a report on homelessness, so about 136,000 homeless in California. San Bernardino County, our 2019 point in time count, 2,607 homeless. About 1,900 of those were out on the streets throughout the county, 40% in the San Bernardino area and 20% in the Victorville area. Over the past five years, we've contacted over 7,000 homeless individuals, we've assisted over 5,000 with getting them connected to programs, we've referred and done paperwork for over 3,000, and we've housed 1,700 folks. So to say that the people don't always want help, kind of a myth with the thing there, but obviously those contacts again and again and again for those long-term solutions to get them connected with those resources and things like that. Some of the causes and effects that we've seen in California specifically with Proposition 47, 57, and AB 109, you know, some of those were sold and voted as safe schools and things like that, but it was decriminalization. So those impacts, we're starting to see across the state, I think 24 of the larger counties have released their numbers for the point in time count, which is a HUD mandate, and all of them are up except three in the state. San Bernardino County had a 23% increase this year, 16% last year, so a 40% increase in the past two years, which is pretty average around the state. A lot of larger counties and cities are putting 40 to 60% increases in the past two years on homeless. So those decriminalization measures have had a strong impact on people, you know, not going to prison, so they're on our streets and things like that with the drugs or misdemeanors. A lot of our folks have drugs that are going, you know, through the court systems, they're not addressed. Also, the mental health side, not addressed. Then the legalization of marijuana. Denver saw a huge increase in homeless population. We did that as a state legalized marijuana, and we see a lot of that going down a few to the millennial era, that 25 to 35, a lot of that and the impact of that growing population. And then housing costs, where the average for market rent in San Bernardino County is about $1,200, and going down to the senior population there. That senior population, one of the biggest growths, actually 71% increase from 2018 to 2019. If you're on a fixed income of $900 or so, which the average social security is, and rent's $1,200, there's not a lot of room for living there. So like I mentioned, that millennial era, that kind of lack of responsibility, we see a lot of those folks ending up out on the street, not a lot of those folks ending up out on the street, not going into the working world and things like that. Also, one of the biggest increases the past two years on point in time count. And then for law enforcement, the recent court decisions that have really tied our hands. So, you know, trying to address homelessness through municipal codes and things like that, where a lot of cities within the county have municipal codes in reference to camping, a lot of those with the Martin versus Boise, recent case law, and a court decision up in Idaho, where you're kind of targeting that population that's camping out there with the municipal codes, has really tied our hand to not be able to address those people that are camping in public land and stuff like that and arrest them. So really, it comes down to the criminal aspect of addressing that, and it makes it difficult in flood controls and things like that where they might be, because most of that is addressed through a municipal code. Also, like the parks and things like that, so if they're in the, in certain parks and stuff like that, if they're there, it's just like the public being there. So trying to address it through park hours, after-hours, and stuff like that, where you're not targeting a population, but anybody that might be at the park, if they're, you know, the ball field and they're playing baseball 11 o'clock, and they get cited along with the homeless person. So a lot of those court decisions have had a strong impact on what we can do as law enforcement to try to address those. And I think we've seen that across the state. We've definitely seen that on the news recently with Orange County over the past year or so, and some of the effects there, and they don't all fall under the Boise versus Martin because their own federal lawsuit. So a lot of those different causes and effects of state legislation and things like that have had a strong impact on these increases in homelessness. Some of that community awareness and things like that, you know, any homeless person could call 211 if they want to get assistance and get connected to resources. On the next slide, we have our information. I also encourage you, you know, a city or Public Works, whoever might be running into these folks within the city, to let us know where they are, and we'll go out with our team and offer the resources. Or call the non-emergency number of dispatch if they're there, because obviously, if it's a deputy response or not, and what are they going to do except go offer that person to connect with us? Because that crime's not there. Also, the positive change, not spare change. This was a program the sheriff started a couple of years ago to really try to encourage folks, you know, everybody has a heart and feels for the people that might be on off-ramp and things like that. So we dressed down and took an unmarked car a few years back, and for a week, we went out and we spoke with panhandlers. We just went in plain clothes. What we found was 60% of the panhandlers weren't homeless. Most of them were doing it for addiction issues, couldn't get jobs because of probation issues, and all of them had some type of previous drug arrests over that week in the county. So a lot of them would admit they were trying to just get the money, they didn't want the food and things like that. So really encourage community not to give directly to the panhandler, but give to organizations that might help move those people beyond homeless. Some of the things with the state, the state with Governor Newsom's new budget is a billion dollars towards homeless. The county programs are getting about $8 million for the HEAP funds, and those will be able to help people in whatever community. There's new funding where you don't have to do the shelter declaration, crisis declaration, and things like that. But really encouraging cities to work together. So the county has put in some strategies together for cities to come to the table, to work together, to try to address it as a regional, as the state's requesting with this potential funding that's coming, to try to address homelessness throughout the community. And that's our contact information. That goes to all our team, all three of us, that HOPE email, and we read that every day. And the messages, we check at least once a day. So if you have issues you're trying to address, or people, we encourage you to call that number. We'll come out, offer them resources. Obviously, that long-term solution is more successful than a short-term trip to the jail or whatever it might be without resources. Thank you for your time. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer anything.
Thank you, Deputy Jones. I have a question about contacting you if there is somebody in need. Is this a number that is, that has a live person that will answer it? It's a leave a message and you'll get back?
Yeah. So we checked during the Monday through Thursday, we check at least once a day, and then we try to, you know, go out to that person and find that person as soon as we can, so then connect them with resources and stuff like that.
Okay.
You're more welcome to share that number also.
And what's the best thing to do on a weekend?
Same thing, so providers aren't open also. So it kind of makes it difficult, you know, and then follow up with them. If it's a family or something like that, 211's always an option there, 24/7, and they're connecting to a lot of the same resources that we are also.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Deputy? Mayor Protem?
Did I hear you say it was $8 million worth of funding that's going to be coming down from the state?
Yeah, the HEAP funds were about $8 million, and there's going to be additional with HAPS and cash funds.
Is that countywide?
Yeah, for programs countywide that...
Not enough, huh? It really is?
Probably never enough. Housing costs.
And is it stipulated just for housing, or is it...
So the HEAP funding, that was under Governor Brown, and it had a lot of area to do whatever you kind of want. A lot of it went to diversion and moving costs and things like that. So that's the money that's going to be hitting very soon. The HAPS funding and the cash funds, round two, should be open towards the end of the year, and the HAPS funds are more towards navigation centers, shelters, and things like that. So I know that Board Supervisor, Joseph Gonzalez, she's kind of the forefront of homelessness for our county, she's tried to, you know, talk to the state about some flexibility with that because of the vast area of the county. So different things like that, maybe motels and stuff like that.
Thank you. You know, we've got a couple of representatives here that could easily listen really hard about this, because it seems to me that, as you talked about, it's multi-pronged. It's a mental situation, it's a social situation. And then, you know, maybe above all, it's also the, you know, the failure to be able to, in the system, to be able to get people into a real working kind of situation. Granted, you're always going to end up with a drug interference and, you know, all those social conditions that create problems, but, you know, at least in my experience, I've seen people snap up when they have an opportunity. It's the old deal, you know, you teach a man to fish?
Right.
Yeah. And it just seems to me that if we could conjure up a little bit more cash in relation to that from our various avenues and get that in place, it'd sure help you guys.
There's definitely political will, and a lot of times, you know, that isn't there. And I know Supervisor Gonzalez has a relationship with all the representatives here and probably in their ears a lot more than we know about. But I think also the state stepping up for the first time to put money towards the issue also is a big sign in reference to, you know, giving some resources, and then the county's working on a strategic plan to include those cities to try to address it. But then you have those socio-impacts that have, it's not, nothing we can force somebody to.
Thank you for your help and your service.
Appreciate your time.
All right. Further questions? Councilmember Hussey.
Deputy Jones, I met you one time before at the League of Cities, and you talked about Loma Linda, and, you know, it really opens your eyes, and, you know, the HOPE program's a great program because you guys are the first ones on scene, and, you know, we want the homeless to trust you, you know, and you're trying to give them resources. But that's the whole thing, is trying to give them resources, that they take advantage of the resources. And the thing is too, you know, because I worked in a federal prison, and one of the reasons why your population of homelessness in Victorville is in the Mojave River up there, because when we release them from prison, they're pretty much on their own, and I think they probably go live in the riverbed or something. But that was the problem with the incarceration, because once they get out, a lot of them don't take advantage of the programs, and a lot of them just want to go and be by themselves, and they unfortunately come back in revolving door. They violate their parole. But I'm glad the state's given some money, it needs to get more money, because I believe the state issue did cause this problem, you know, with the releasing of the jails, inmates, and then the legalizing of the marijuana, because of my personal thing, and, you know, and seeing it firsthand, working in prisons, substance abuse and what happens, and talking to these inmates, and, you know, it starts out with low, intense drug like marijuana, gradually moves up and more and more, then they get dependent. My biggest concern, you know, since I'm a veteran, you know, is the homeless veterans too, and families out there that are infected by, you know, young kids that have, you know, just fallen on their parents. About how many kids do we have out there that are homeless?
The count had 4% was families. We've luckily only found probably a couple dozen children out there with families over the past five years that we've been doing this. Definitely a lot of resource out there, and we're working kind of to answer the weakened things that Mayor had mentioned with some of the programs to have available 24/7. So if law enforcement comes into contact with a family that's living in a park or living in a car, then we could get them a motel voucher throughout the county to try to answer those. And then the homeless veterans, obviously, have been a huge initiative from the federal level on down. Our county's housed over 1,100 veterans that were previously homeless, and there's basically, if they're saying they're a veteran, they've been offered services willingly or not, they may still be out there.
Because I know Colton Joint Unified School District, I think they work hand-in-hand also to take care of homeless families, the children.
Yeah, so the, there's two different standpoints on children. So there's a different definition from HUD's definition of homelessness to the McKinney-Vento, which the school districts see. So San Bernardino, I don't know Colton particularly their number, but the school district, San Bernardino County School District puts that number like at 30-plus thousand students that would meet homeless criteria under that.
Do you know if they have a program for young adults that are in the foster program? Because by the time they're 18, they're released from the state, do they have some type of program for that instead of just being on the streets?
No, so a lot of the programs are based on mental health, and if not, then that's what we do see. We see the foster kids aging out and going down onto the streets. And that's something that the county, that they've been definitely trying to address through the Homeless Youth Task Force. There was previously Assemblyman, now Ramos, was the chair of. So they've definitely been trying to address those issues.
And how long, if there's a mental health condition, can we put them in the hospital for treatment?
So a lot of it comes down to, you know, that person has to fit that criteria, and that criteria is really difficult. So just them being on the street with a mental health condition, if they're not creating that level to be needing that care, and then what we see a lot of times is, it might be a medication issue, it might be they just try to get out of an issue. So even on a patrol level, we, you know, take them on a 5150 over to ARMC. They see a doctor, they say, "Well, I really don't want to hurt myself," so they release them before that hold. So another area that, you know, doesn't really create a fix for somebody, but it takes a lot of time from our patrol level.
One other question, last one. Typhus is an outbreak in LA and Skid Row. Do we have any of those issues here with our encampments?
No, so the Hep C breakout and all those different breakouts that have been happening around the state have really, we haven't had anything in San Bernardino County. We've worked with our public health administration at the county level to inquire those different breakouts that have been going on. And what we feel is, you know, those areas are not as rural and don't have as much land. They're all sleeping where they're defecating and everything else, so that's the cause of a lot of that. Where here, there's the open land and things like that.
Thank you for your dedication, Deputy. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Further questions? Thank you, Deputy Jones.
Thank you. I also have a stack of resource guides I'll leave for you guys for your...
And as a reminder, you can email hope@sbcsd.org or call 909-387-0623. Hopefully, we can put that up on our website as well, Mr. Duffy. And our next and final presentation for tonight is new employee introductions.
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager. My first employee I want to call up is named Joseph Acosta. Joseph is the office specialist for the City Clerk's office. Joseph comes to us from A.Check Global in Riverside, where he specialized in the employment background checks. So, Mr. Joseph Acosta.
Hello, councilmembers. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Joseph Acosta. I'm a lifelong resident of Colton. My previous employer, five years as Mr. Duffy, I just said, was A.Check Global. It was a third-party background screening company located in Riverside. I'm happy and excited to be here, and I love working with the staff. Everyone's so nice, kind, and welcoming, and I just love being able to work, for the opportunity to work for the City of Grand Terrace. Very excited to be here.
Welcome. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Joseph. Our next employee is Sarah Gutierrez. Sarah is the Public Works Department Secretary, and she comes from us from the San Bernardino International Airport, where she was a former purchasing clerk.
Yes. Hello, Mayor, councilmember. I'm very grateful for this job, to work for the city. Like City Manager has said, I worked at San Bernardino Airport for a little while, as well as City of Colton in the Mayor and Council Office, so I'm very proud of that. So I'm very excited to be here. Thank you.
Welcome, Ms. Gutierrez.
Thank you.
We look forward to working with you.
I conclude my report, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Well, wonderful that we have new employees. We will move on to our next item, which is our consent calendar. Our consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They are acted upon by the council at one time without any discussion. However, any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests for removal? All right. Seeing no requests, I will entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
I move that we approve the check register of the consent calendar, I'm sorry.
Second approval of the consent calendar.
Motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Hussey. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNamara voting yes.
Thank you. Move to public comment. This is the opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the city council may not discuss or act on an item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. Items may also have a brief response from staff to questions raised during public comment, or a matter may be agendized for a future meeting. Are there requests to speak at this time? Thank you. Our first speaker is Jeffrey McConnell.
Jeffrey McConnell, Walnut Avenue. It grieves me to bring this up in a public forum, but I do this hopefully in an attempt to nip it in the bud and hopefully to put some procedures in place so it never happens again. Started the last election when I was campaigning for a council seat, when I was being notified by people and approached by staff members, where I was getting phone calls and emails were being sent out by the city manager to business owners, mentioning my signs, and when I was campaigning outside of the donut shop, registering voters, and giving away a watermelon, which a lot of people know I'm famous for. And I didn't really pursue it, but I, when we lost five, one-third of our staff, five new employees, here's some new ones right here. I felt that, and I did some, I've been doing a lot of research down in Compton where our city manager came from, and found out that he had problems with his staff over there. I started putting it out on social media, and he apparently didn't like that, so that he filed a restraining order against me to silence me and take away my First Amendment rights, which were protected by the men and people who died, women who died for that flag over there. So needless to say, he lost, but he did present himself, even though he filed pro per, he presented himself as a city manager. He brought along the planning director, who presented herself as a planning director as a witness. I want to side note, the planning director told the entire truth. And he also made references to how he has to protect the entire staff, meaning something physical, but nothing, all our testimony was clear that it was not, nothing physical whatsoever related for the, on the pleadings that he submitted. So this is like the second time that city managers have done this in the last four years, two elections, where they both got personally involved in our local election. So I'm really asking you to, please put this in contracts for the city employees right now, so they stay out of our public election, since it is unethical behavior, but if they're never punished for it, it just continues to happen, it seems. In 2013, during the Measure C battle, where I fought the utility measure, apparently it cost the city a lot of money to split our town. So the reason why I really also want to nip this in the bud is the, apparently during the statements at the, in the council and the judge, between the judge and the... the statements at the, in the council and the judge, between the judge and the City Manager, it seems that he wants to pursue this with another lawsuit. So I'm asking you and the city's attorney to please read the transcript and nip this in the bud before it really gets out of hand. And that would not be good for any of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Our next speaker is Bobby Forbes. Or not. Oh, there she is. Do you want to speak from up there? Okay.
So I think I put two things on the slip. One is fireworks. Last Thursday or Friday night, about 11:30, 12 o'clock, one of the people in my neighborhood decided to set off a really loud firework. Immediately, Facebook lit up because it was so loud. I happened to be sitting outside, and I saw it go up into the sky. And the neighbors all complained, you know, via Facebook and texting me. Car alarms went off, dogs were barking. It was quite a disturbance, and it was only one firework. So we're getting ready. Please make announcements, send them out on your Facebook page, do all the things that you need to do to remind the people in town what they can and cannot do regarding the fireworks. It startled me, and I was seeing it. You know, there was one household near me that the whole house was already asleep, and it happened, and it scared them. We have people in town with PTSD and other issues, and it's just totally disrespectful. You can't do anything about it, but if I don't say something, then you won't get the announcements out, is the way I feel. Thank you. The other thing is, we probably had six or seven dogs over the weekend, lost in Grand Terrace and found in Grand Terrace, most of which, but maybe one or two, didn't get home. But I'm asking again, please, whatever department handles this, please figure out a way that we can put up signs and let them stay up for two or three or four days, let them be dated something. Not that we have to wait till Monday to come get a city sign. We need a way to be able to let the public know that their dog from around the corner has been found, because the signs work. I go out and I ask for permission now from private properties so that people can put them in their yards. May sound silly, but it works, and it's important to people. Dogs are not always left out on purpose. They get out accidentally, and many of them get hit by cars, which one did over the weekend. So please, I'm asking again, I'll keep asking, as simple as it seems, I'm going to keep asking until something happens. And third, I would like to say to the people that went out to the cemetery in Riverside and put out flags, took their families, took that time, the Boy Scouts and everyone that did that. It chokes me up, I'm not able to go out and do it, but I think what a wonderful service these people are doing, and they're raising their children to see things that are good in the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes. It's the last request to speak that I have, so we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for their communications, beginning with Councilmember Jeff Allen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. During the last, since the last meeting, I haven't had a chance to attend any official meetings, except for, I did go to the Terrace View Elementary Annual Art Show and Auction. And I found this lovely piece of art. And it's just, this is handmade by the fifth-grade class. It's a special, unique kind of ceramics. And then they hung it up, and the auction was a fundraiser for the library, and there was some genuine, real, I will tell you, real works of art there. And if you didn't attend, just seeing them was a pleasure enough. And those people who auctioned, who earned them in an auction, who won them in auction, they're the ones who really got it. But I was pleased to get this, and I'm going to hang it in City Hall. If you want to come take a look at it or tell the, any of the kids who made it that they can come look at it. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Bill Hussey.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. I just want to emphasize what Ms. Forbes said. I was honored and humbled to be a guest speaker for Riverside National Cemetery. I didn't know I was going to be the only speaker, and I didn't tell my wife I was speaking, so that's why she showed up, so. But it is a humbling experience, and one of the things I got to, they wanted me to speak on stuff about history, and we have a grandfather who fought in the Korean War. He's a Marine, he was a machine gunner, so I just emphasized a little bit about the Korean War that, you know, when it started, June 25th, 1950, and there was, it lasted for three years, actually, there was a ceasefire. There was no victory on either side, and it was the first war against communism, I was against the Chinese and the Russians, and the United Nations on our side with South Korea, against North Korea when they invaded, the 38 parallel during 1950. But one thing, keynote, that there is a, that war had the most civilian casualties, over a million people died. It had over 40,000 American casualties, had over 100,000 American wounded, and there's still 7,700 MIAs in the country of Korea right now. So it was a humbling experience, and I just want to emphasize, you know, some of the stuff that the grandfather went through. And the other thing I talked about is, you know, on Memorial Day, it's to honor our war dead for the sacrifices they made for our freedom. One thing people don't know, there's some are veterans who are still casualties of war years to decades later with Agent Orange. My father was one of them. He died 25 years later after the Vietnam War because of Agent Orange, massive heart attack. And they finally admitted to it, that was the Agent Orange that caused the gun in his bloodstream. And we also have young men and women today with PTSD who are taking their own life and, you know, ask our fellow veterans and families, you know, to look out for them. So besides that, and one of the other educational things people didn't know is the grave markers out there, they'll have two names on it. They'll have the serviceman and their spouse. And, you know, a lot of times, too, we have women who served and their spouse stayed home. So just emphasize that. And I asked a very important thing, is when you, you know, it's not a race to put the flag on, you know, many flags you get that day. We're honoring our war dead and our veterans. You put the flag in the middle, in front of the grave marker, and take a minute to look down and read their names and tell them thank you and say a little prayer, so. It was really touching. And like I said, I was really humble and really appreciate that they'd let me speak that day. And it was a good turnout, and my wife and father-in-law was there, and I told them, I go, "They're pretty fast with these flags. It's amazing how much, you know, they get." And today, I took the grandfather there to pick them up, and we had a couple of school buses come in, and they grabbed them. But I want to thank, we have a lot of people in Grand Terrace who volunteer. Nicole's one of them, her and her husband Dan, they go out there every year, and they organize part of the fall, and then they organize, and they get the flags all ready, and they put it away, and put them rubber bands and in totes, and get them ready for Veterans Day. But I remember when they used to just do sections of the cemetery, you know, because they didn't have that many flags. But now, it's a great honor, it's a great, seeing when you see every American serviceman, family, personnel with a flag, and it's a simple thank you for the sacrifices they made for our nation. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you, God bless.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussey. Councilmember Sylvia Robles.
Yes, I attended, along with, we were well represented for ESRI, who does data. It was just an overview of what we've seen before, but it was some reminder of, we don't have a tech person, but they brought up about, every city gets a pass for their annual event. And I just think it'd be important to find somebody that, at least on staff, that's designated to kind of stay up on what's happening with that. Because I recall that there's a lot of census data that you can get that we might need when we're dealing with this affordable housing or homeless issues. And that's all with that. The campus, I was, excuse me, very curious to see it, so I was happy to have been invited. And my two years were up for my ethics training. Every year, two years, we're obligated to take ethics training. I've done it a number of times, so if you finish early, before two hours, then they give you more to do. So I was going on three hours, I think, at the time I had it done. But the interesting thing that I saw that was new was there's been some litigation about the agendas. And the agendas must be clearly descriptive of what actions we're going to take. It can't have like a mistake where we said we're going to spend on a contract one amount, and it's actually an error because of the Brown Act, and people have to have constructive notice of what we actually are talking about and the correct amounts and the correct subject. So that was interesting to me because, and that's just I wanted to share, because us doing this every two years, then it means that if I'm sitting here, I have to make sure that I ask our city attorney to stay on top of this, and that we also have to stay on top of that. So we're fulfilling our obligation to the community, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robles. Mayor Protem Doug Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, I'd just like to talk just a little bit about the Memorial Day celebration. I really look forward to these opportunities to honor our military. I was, I count myself really extremely fortunate, because my granddaughter here recently asked me about the draft, and she's studying it, of all things, in college, which I thought they covered in high school. But she said, "Wow, that's just, that draft is, you know, would have been something that would have been really scary to be faced with." I was, in 1972, when I signed up for the draft, it was scary, because what we had going on around us at that time was, was really scary. I was fortunate, and I told her that, that the year that they took the draft to number 66, I was number 99. And then they closed off the draft. So I feel really strongly that the military and first responders that keep us in bed at night instead of, you know, in trouble and, and not being able to sleep at night, and we, it is incumbent upon us to think of them and to, and to pray for them. It is, it's an incredible thing that what they have done. I count 17 Revolutionary War soldier ancestors, and that's just in, just in the Revolutionary War. But I also count one that was really important, and that was, in the Civil War, I was told by a relative of mine in Kentucky, that one fellow had gone to visit his sick father. And after he got done visiting his sick father, he stepped out the door of his house in Virginia and was shot by his best friend, because they were on two different sides. War is an awful thing. It's a terrible thing. But I am re, I feel really fortunate that there have been people that have stood between me and that awful thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So since our last meeting, I've had the opportunity to visit our elementary schools and support them in certain ways that has been wonderful. And I was able to go to the Celebration of the Arts that Councilmember Allen talked about at Terrace View. They had an open house in the morning where I was able to see just a little bit of what they had going on. And I took in a puppet show that was put on by third graders, and it was wonderful. It was all about little biographical characters that they learned about, and they created their own puppets for them, and quite a bit of artistic ability, and, and the teachers really helped them to, to do some research on, on different areas, whether it be historical, educational, science, sports. It just, it was a really, really neat puppet show. And then I was back there just a little bit later on for seeing some of the beautiful art that they auctioned off. And there is a lot of talent at that elementary school. Then on the next day, I was invited to go with the Grand Terrace Elementary School to the Colton Joint Unified School District Board Meeting, where they presented their rebranding. They rebranded that elementary school as an Exploration and Innovation Academy. And what they're doing is they're focusing on what they call learner-centered school culture that allows some flexibility and encourages creativity, fosters curiosity, and promotes autonomy in every modality of learning. Now, having said that, their primary goal overall is to make sure that their students are reading at grade level or above. And they are thinking that the way that they are approaching this aligns with the district's focus on today's readers being tomorrow's leaders. And they, what they have created there is a real good opportunity for the teachers to use their creativity to, to spark the curiosity of their students. And so they have some interesting things that they're teaching them. They get to not only learn how to read, but they get to learn how to do some coding, some work with 3D printers, and some virtual reality. And so they are exploring into the sciences as well. And so that's, that's really nice to see, the ability for our teachers to be creative in the way that they teach our students, and engage them in wanting to be excited about learning. And then last Friday, I was able to see the Grand Terrace High School seniors really modeling some wonderful behavior. They got to dress in their caps and gowns, and they visited the elementary schools here in town, but also in the surrounding school district as well, because some of them graduated from different elementary schools. But they were there to tell the elementary school students what it was like since leaving elementary school, and their educational experience, and encouraging them to stay in school, and talking about where they would be going to college, and what they would be studying, and what their future career plans were. I think that was just a wonderful tradition that they've started doing for the last few years, and I hope that it continues. And then lastly, on May 27th, being able to attend the Memorial Day Ceremony by our Veterans Wall of Freedom Committee, to hear the keynote speaker, Grand Terrace resident physician Colonel Conrad Salinas, who spoke to us about the origins of Memorial Day and decorations, and why celebrations are what they are for Memorial Day, and not only honoring those who lost their lives and gave their lives fighting for our freedom, but that the hot dogs and the barbecues, while we keep them in mind, are really good ways to celebrate the freedom that we were given through others' sacrifice. And he did a fantastic job. And that ends my report. So we will move back to our agenda. We have no public hearings, but we will go to some unfinished business. Item six, which is a zoning code amendment, 18-01, to delete the requirement of a specific plan for development in the Hillside residential areas, when the property is one acre or less in size and served by public infrastructure and fire service. Sandra Molina, Planning and Development Services Director.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. So at the last City Council meeting, the council conducted a public hearing on a proposed general plan amendment and zoning code amendment to modify regulations in the Hillside residential areas to establish provisions by which certain developments wouldn't be required to do a specific plan. The City Council did adopt the general plan amendment by resolution, and that became effective. They introduced the proposed code amendment, and this evening is the council's second reading for adoption of the proposed ordinance that they moved over from the last meeting. So there's no changes to the ordinance as presented last time, and at this time, I'm happy to respond any questions the council may have.
All right. Thank you, Director Molina. Any final questions at this time? Okay. Any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, so we will bring it back for consideration of a motion.
I move the recommendation.
All right. Mr. City Attorney, do we need to read this whole?
Second. The title of the ordinance is included in the resolution, in the recommendation, so I don't think a further reading is necessary.
Very good. I have a motion by Councilmember Robles, a second by Councilmember Allen. Please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor McNamara voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson votes no.
Thank you. We will move on to new business, which is the 26th Amendment to Law Enforcement Services Contract Number 94-797, with the County of San Bernardino, to provide law enforcement services for fiscal year 2019-2020. And to begin with, we have Cynthia Fortune, our Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, City Council. The staff report before you is the 26th Amendment for Law Enforcement Services with the San Bernardino County Sheriff. This staff report supports the following goals: ensuring our fiscal viability through the review and monitoring of contractual agreements and expenditures, and maintaining public safety by continuing adequate staff levels for law enforcement services in our community. The City of Grand Terrace has contracted with the San Bernardino- The City of Grand Terrace has contracted with the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department since 1994, and for City Council's review is the 26th Amendment totaling approximately 1.9 million. The staffing levels are the same as the prior year. We get about 328 hours per week with an annual hours of about 17,000. From the financial point of view, we recommend approving the 26th Amendment with San Bernardino County Sheriff and authorize the city manager to execute the contract. Lieutenant Wolf and I are happy to answer any questions the City Council may have in relation to the amendment or services provided.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Fortune. What questions do council have of staff? Councilmember Hussey?
Thank you, Mayor. On packet page 166, down in discussion, traffic enforcement. I know, you know, we're limited to what the sheriffs that we have on duty and what they can provide, and I know they do enforce traffic regulations, but actually, I'm bringing this up on my other, I like to see, agenda, is the, I know we used to do DUI checkpoints in this city, and I don't know if that cost the city extra money, but the thing I would like to see is, can we do this part of this contract? Is the traffic enforcement having, because I know we do for the safe school passages, can we do something like once a month when we do traffic enforcement, rotate it with the motorcycle officers? Would that be part of this contract? And will the county do that with part of the contract, not cost the city any additional funds?
Well, not really with the motorcycle. What we can do, we can do what we can in-house, but if we bring somebody from Rancho, because we do not have patrol motorcycles here, and actually, the department's phasing those out. So in the next few months, a year or so, we probably are not going to have that option. We can, as we've done in the past, did traffic campaigns at the beginning of school years for a period of time. It was on an overtime basis, but it was really minimal in the, in the whole scheme of things. And then, such as the Mike Schlegel's position with the HOPE program that we're enforcing now, we can come up with something to focus on traffic-related issue, basically. And actually, Mike has been doing that. I've asked him, because he's our quality-of-life guy, is when he's not focusing on homelessness, to focus on traffic issues.
Yeah, I would like to, you know, I don't know about the other councilman, but see that, like, a once, at least minimum once a month, you know, sweep on problem areas where you just, you know, those officers are just focused on that. And that's why I was asking if it could be done in there, and you said it'd probably be done with overtime?
To be able to commit somebody to do that, it would have to be, most likely have to be on overtime.
How many officers would they need to do, like I say, once a month? Would it be like two officers, or, you know, rotating different times, different areas, different trouble spots in the city, so we could admit this?
Depending on your timing, because I know we have issues in the morning at school time at 7:00 a.m., and then we have later in the day as well. So we would have to just come up with a plan of what we want to accomplish. And of course, we could come up with something. And I would, as I've done with everything else, try to make it as minimally impact the overtime issue as I've done in the past. But we, of course, we want it effective at the same time. If I was to just put a patrol guy over there, if a call goes out, now we've lost that enforcement.
Yeah, I understand. That's why I was just, you know, because I know it was mentioned last time about the traffic issues, and we see it all the time. And that's a big enforcement because unfortunately, we're having the speeders, and we're having the people come out of town, and, you know, they're pretty much disrespecting our laws and regulations on our enforcement. So I was just asking, because it said traffic enforcement here, if that happens, does the city, or, you know, as far as fines, who gets the majority part of the fines? Does it go to the county?
It's split up into percentages, and I think the small portion of it goes to the cities, and a small portion of it goes to the courts, and county as well.
Okay. Well, that's, I just was wondering, Lieutenant Wolf, you know, because it's a big issue here, and I know we can't, you know, the patrol cars, so I was just wondering if we could look into that.
Yeah, I know. That's, that is an issue, and of course, it's on my mind as well. I do, when I hear complaints throughout the, from the citizens and from council, I don't think that they go ignored. I do pass that information on to our deputies that are working and ask them, when calls permitting, please go enforce traffic issues in these areas. And I know they're doing it. They do make a substantial amount of traffic stops throughout their day. And also, another thing that we're doing too is getting the speed trailers back up and running, and we'll get them out to, hopefully, that will remind people to slow down through these problem areas where maybe we can't get people, it might just be a reminder for them to slow down.
When you do your DUI checkpoints, is that, does the city have to pay for that overtime too, or is that just part of the services that you guys provide? You know, you have, like, a certain spot you guys, or a certain area you get?
The DUI checkpoints are usually funded by grants that are, that are figured out throughout the year. I can reach out and see if any of our neighbors have something that we can put together. But I know Central Station did not secure any grants for that.
Because I was just wondering, because we haven't seen one of those in a while in this city. And like I said, we've got a lot of thorough threes. Okay.
Yep. We can look into it.
All right. Thank you.
Further questions? Councilmember Allen?
Lieutenant Wolf, on packet page 167, it states that about the, that this budget represents a 2.2% increase, but staff had estimated a 4% increase. I guess this would be directed to Miss Fortune, or either one of you. But it talks about-
I'll let her answer it.
Okay. It talks about how we're going to retain that difference in account in the event of salary negotiations. So my question is, do you anticipate salary negotiations soon?
So it is for Lieutenant Wolf?
Yeah, I won't be able to. They are negotiating now. It could be a long process, but we just started negotiating, so.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes, Mayor, I was just going to just comment on that same line. On packet page 167, there is that note in the, in the staff report that says, "Staff estimates the $80,000 4% increase from 2018-19 to 1920. At this time, city staff will retain the difference." That's $37,000. So if those staff negotiations, those labor negotiations don't consume this, we can certainly come back and, as Lieutenant Wolf mentioned, if there's some overtime strategies that council would like to employ into the traffic, these funds can be used for that particular purpose.
Okay. Further questions? Councilmember Robles?
My question is too full. I think we're kind of getting into, in our discussions, we're kind of saying, well, we want you to do, we want to kind of, it's almost like we're managing your, the sheriff's time. And I'm not sure that's appropriate for us to do from the dais. It would have to be, I think, an agendized topic. And I probably forgot my second thing. Oh, and aren't all these things items that should be in our, in our budget discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Councilperson Robles, because this is a separate item, but you're right, any sort of modification that you might want to recommend in the budget process, you want to have that discussion. And that's why we're just approving the dollar amount for the services. And certainly, when you have your budget deliberations and your work priority list, if you want to mention those particular items, I would come back to this particular area, yes.
When I would do budgets for the county, you know, in the narrative, it would have that, and it would also have, you know, an asterisk that this, when, in your salaries and benefits or contract services, an asterisk would be, you know, there's this going on. You know, what I want to stay away from is doing this piecemeal. I want to have a holistic discussion when we do the budget discussion. And be something to hear from the folks when you go out in the community to budget in the park kind of thing.
Okay.
So what is our option with this if we don't want to pay a 2% increase? Lieutenant Wolf, is this open for negotiation?
I don't think so.
All right. So I'm going to go back to our discussion on 166, where our law enforcement contract does include those items that are bulleted here: enforcement of state statutes, enforcement of city ordinances, traffic enforcement, specialized enforcement such as arson, homicide, juvenile, and narcotics enforcement. We leave it up to the determination of you to determine where best to deploy your resources. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And so in going into that, you look at what is highest priority based on the enforcement of the most egregious problems?
That is correct, yeah. Handling calls for service would be our priority.
All right. So that the idea that we do have traffic enforcement included doesn't mean that that's necessarily a focused item. It just means that when there is traffic to enforce, that is something that you will do as part of your contract.
That is correct. And it also just makes it clear, because CHP handles all the county areas, that we handle everything, like traffic crash-related and such. So it puts us in our area of responsibility.
Now, so you work with the CHP, though, in overlapping areas, correct?
In the county areas, but they handle everything on the roadway. In the cities, we handle everything on the roadway.
Okay. So they don't really, they don't make a habit of coming off of the freeway, unless they're just pulling somebody over off the freeway because it's safer to do that?
They do not do traffic enforcement or traffic crashes in the city limits of Grand Terrace, or any city limits of any of our areas.
Okay. Thank you very much. Further questions? Councilmember Allen, and then to the attorney.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. On the, right underneath, or right above that bullet comment, there's one that says enforce city ordinances. So which city ordinances do you enforce?
Well, we could, we could enforce any city ordinance. We typically don't because you guys have code enforcement.
Right.
We often will go with them and assist them in enforcement of these ordinances, but in the event we need to take action, we can. But again, it's one of those things, is that really where our value is?
Right.
Because you are paying an employee to do that.
Thanks.
Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In response to Councilmember Robles's comments regarding the Brown Act, I appreciate you looking at that issue. On this point, the agenda does describe law enforcement services for the city, and so I do think it is appropriate for the council to look at whatever services the sheriffs are providing. It's all encompassing as part of the contract, so I think we're in good shape.
Further questions? Mayor Pro Tem Wilson.
Okay, so help me clarify here. According to this, it says, "Stated in the original 94-7.97 contract, law enforcement duties to the city shall include enforcement of state statutes," which makes sense, enforcement of city ordinances, enforce, or traffic enforcement, which I think is in the same thing in the city ordinances, and specialized enforcement such as arson, homicide, juvenile, and narcotics enforcement, which is where the sheriffs are really, that's where they really shine, right? I mean, that's really where you guys go after. You're accustomed to doing, you know, the heavy stuff.
No, that means that you have access to our other divisions, such as homicide or narcotics. I mean, here recently, you've had a couple of marijuana grows that our department has combatted, and it had nothing to do with the actual operation of Central Patrol. That was actually from our narcotics division.
Gotcha.
And then our SWAT callouts, it falls under that same umbrella, SWAT and all that stuff. So when those big things happen, you have true access to them, and it's part of the contract. So it's not like you are paying for it, but it's just part of the contract, but it doesn't come out of Central Patrol.
Gotcha.
But we'll handle it.
Which, of course, is up to you guys. I mean, in fact, actually, Councilwoman Robles rightfully called out, "We shouldn't be micromanaging you guys." In other words, it's how you distribute your facilities and so on. Contracts are funny things. As much as they have provisions, let's see, 25 amendments so far, and those 25 amendments to the original contract, we have been pretty much, I guess, say, continuous in relation to our increases to keep up with cost of living increases. I'm not complaining about that. In fact, I'm not complaining about anything, but I find that the scope of work of the contract is inclusive. And so when a thing is inclusive, I don't think any member of this council has given anybody the impression at the county that enforcement 100% of the laws within this municipality is unnecessary. So, and if they have, I assure you that that's not the case. That means to me that there is no limit. I cannot control how you guys go about your business and stuff, but I find that we are woefully inadequate in traffic enforcement. And we don't have anybody else doing that. We don't have little vans with pretty colors on them running around doing traffic enforcement. You guys are the experts, and we're just the client. So I would, you know, as much as I'd like to agree with the idea of this amendment to the contract from 1994, I would like to know how we're going to do stronger enforcement on traffic, because I feel like we are really inadequate in that area. And I don't want to get into a discussion about, you know, how much time we spend or whatever else. I can't do that. I'm not the guy that does that. In fact, the city manager isn't either. It's, just really comes down to, when a contract is inclusive, it means inclusive. Every, all the services are provided.
Mr. City Manager would like to say something?
Yes, just want to, just to point out to the council, you do have a contract administrator, and that is, that is me, the city manager. And so, as in most contracts, when two parties enter into an agreement, if you are, if you have a contract with the sheriff's department, you have every right to request the use of the scope of service. And so based upon your comments, I'm going to work with Lieutenant Wolf. But I think what, one of the important things Lieutenant Wolf said today was that, yes, he can do traffic enforcement, but the moment a call comes in without any additional resources, that enforcement goes away. And so what I will be charged with is, based upon your, based upon your comments, I will seek and find some additional resources to try to come up with programs to focus in on those troubled areas, because we, because we do have troubled areas in the city that are, that are traffic issues. We identified earlier that every year at the start of school, we have these particular issues. And so Lieutenant Wolf has been able to manage that. Now, we have some other shortcuts or avenues that people take throughout the city that we know very well. Lieutenant Wolf, right now, is in the process of fixing some of our existing equipment that we've had, trailer, speed trailers that we've had in the past. So we're working on that. But what we'll have to do is, as part of the overall discussion and our budgetary process, is to, when you identify your priorities, we will come back, and I will keep this as part of our priorities, to address those particular issues as the contract administrator.
I will recognize Councilmember Robles, but I wanted to give Lieutenant Wolf an opportunity to say something if you wanted to add to what City Manager had to say.
Yeah, just as I said earlier, we hear the complaints, and they don't go unnoticed, but we do prioritize our work. Quality of life issues are very important to the sheriff, and, which makes it very important to me. And I know my captain up there probably would agree. So we will do everything that we can to help with that. That was one of the biggest reasons why we were looking into adding the additional deputy. Looking back, years back, I don't know exactly how many, but there was a traffic deputy in Grand Terrace. But unfortunately, that isn't a discussion anymore. So we're just trying to make what we have work. And, you know, we'll do everything we can, but without committing somebody to that position, as the city manager just said, it's very difficult to keep them focused in that position because they're constantly being pulled out of there. So it's not going to be very effective. So it's not going to be very effective.
Councilmember Robles.
Well, yeah, let me clarify, I'm not concerned about a Brown Act violation. My concern is policy. Just to first to get one thing out of the way, there's been situations that have come to my attention that individual city council members call you directly and ask you to do enforcement activities. So I'm uncomfortable with that because I have a city manager. It seems like that's muddled to me and something that needs to bring up. Also, you know, we have a last agenda item where they were going to use a proposal to use underground utility money, and so in an effort to be a team player, I said, okay, let's agree to bring this back in the budget discussion, and the proponent voted no against that item. So then now we have another discussion about how you're going to deploy your resources, and the city manager says, well, I'm going to take your comments, and those are going to be how he manages your contract. Well, here's, here's the thing, we're all elected here, and if one person only says something, and in fairness, the person says, I don't know what my peers think, okay? So it's kind of incumbent on our managers and to say, you need a consensus from us of what our priorities are, not just, you know, picking it, I don't want to say cherry picking, but picking an apple here and there. I would just like to see a more focused discussion, not like, okay, here's a problem, oh, I heard you, I heard this, and this is, I'm going to run with it. Because I think we have a lot of policy chaos when people are calling you directly and going over you, and it's just, there's just a lot of crosstalk going on instead of some focused policy decision-making.
Yes, and-
Mr. City Manager?
Yes, and Councilperson Robles, I want to be clear, I thought I said this earlier, but I want to be clear, the direction that I'm going to take is, one of the things that you, council wanted to do was have these priority workshops. So, and my staff told me the other day, they'd be very interested to see how that works with me, because I don't talk to you guys about capacity. I take more in. And so what we're going to be having the discussion on priority, priority and capacity. And so what we'll be, what we'll be doing is, if there isn't that strong desire from the majority of the council to move forward in the direction, or then it's not going to be on our priority that we, that we share with you. It'll be an item, but it won't be a top priority item. But, you know, in terms of law enforcement and management, here's the thing, without additional resources, we can't go beyond the current capacity. And I'm not going to do any additional resources that you don't approve. And that's always the point, is that my task is to bring to you what you guys want. I'm going to focus in on what our capacity of the organization is, and then say, here's what we're going to do. And so if the council shifts and changes those priorities, I'm going to say, okay, we have a capacity, which one of these things I can recommend that we're not going to be able to accomplish? Because we have, and as part of our budget discussion, there's a lot of things that are going on in the city, and that's going to be the focal point of how we move forward.
Councilmember Hussey.
You know, I think this is directed towards me, so I'm going to just tell you that I came up with the question to put on the agenda, I think it was right after our last meeting, when I heard everybody talk, and I always send my requests to our city clerk via email, so that there's public record on it. And when you have an item brought today, and I'm reading it this weekend, among other things, and I see traffic enforcement, like, wow, this is kind of focusing on the agenda thing that I want to bring up, so let's get some clarification. It wasn't me calling Mr. Duffy and saying, Mr. Duffy, I want to do this agenda item. I did this agenda item right after our last counseling. So if I'm getting any reading in between the windows here, I, we don't do that, and I want to just bring up what we do for traffic enforcement, you know? It's on there for the contract. I want to see what we could do. I lived in this city a long time, I know what they used to do, see if we could get the same kind of resources and everything done. We hear the citizens over and over again about it, and when the citizens ask a question, I'm going to ask the same question. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, any further questions of staff at this time? All right, see, no more? I'll open it up to public comment. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Lieutenant Wolf. Thank you, Ms. Fortune. We'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
I move the recommendation.
Well, I'll second, excuse me, I'll second it.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilmember Robles, a second by Councilmember Allen. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protim Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNaboe voting yes.
Thank you. Item number eight is the defeasance of the successor agency's 2011 tax allocation bonds in Amendment Number One to the successor agency's last and final recognized obligation payment schedule and administrative budget. Cynthia Fortune, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening again, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board, Cynthia Fortune. The staff report before you has two requests, to deface the successor agency's 2011 tax allocation bonds and to approve the last and final recognized obligation payment schedule, Amendment Number One. The staff report supports goal number one, ensuring our fiscal viability through the review of revenues and expenditures, including enforceable obligations and the alternatives to reduce debt and increase revenues to the city's general fund. So the purpose, as I mentioned earlier, of this report is twofold, to adopt a resolution authorizing the defeasance of successor agency's 2011 A and B tax allocation bonds, both taxable and non-taxable, and the related escrow agreement, and to adopt a resolution authorizing Amendment Number One to the agency's last and final ROPS incorporating that defeasance. So in relation, we'll start with the defeasance of the tax allocation bonds. To give the successor agency board a background, in February 2012, the Redevelopment Dissolution Act became effective. In May of 2013, the successor agency received its finding completion, of completion, meaning that the agency fulfilled all certain dissolution requirements. In September 2015, Senate Bill 107 amended the Redevelopment Dissolution Act, removing certain bond restrictions. So because of that act, we were able to do the following. In May 2017, we got 5% of our bond proceeds. We were able to submit our last and final ROPS in August of 2018, and in that same month, we were actually able to receive, transfer 15% of those bond proceeds from the agency to the city's general fund to be used in accordance with the original bond covenants. So now, in relation to the defeasance of the tax allocation balance, California Health and Safety Code authorizes an agency to issue refunding bonds or other indebtedness for the purpose of achieving debt service savings. And it also states that the remaining bonds cannot be, that cannot be spent, shall be used to deface the bonds. So what the successor agency staff did was meet with all our council, and based on the meetings that we've had, have agreed that defeating the bonds will result in additional savings to the city. So as stated in the staff report, these are the following costs that is needed to deface both A and B, a little over 17 million, and total cash on hand is actually, as of April 30th, 17.2. It continues to earn interest, so until such that this is actually defaced, more interest will earn. So for the 2011 tax allocation bonds, it has a callable date of September 1st, meaning this is the date on which a bond can be redeemed before its maturity date, which is 2019. So the attached proposed escrow agreement, and the trustee at this time is US Bank, they are the current trustee of our bond proceeds, they will deposit the funds into an escrow account, they will pay all the bondholders on that callable date, and then all the bonds will be considered defaced. Now, for the 2011B, that callable date is actually September 1st, 2021. But written in our escrow agreement, the trustee will deposit the funds still into an escrow account, purchase securities to earn additional interest, so that by the callable date of September 21, September 1st, 2021, they will have sufficient funds to pay principal and interest to the bondholders. So as shown on page 182 of the agenda packet, defeating both bonds will result in increased residual revenue to the affected entities, specifically to the city's general fund, an average of a little over $500,000 annually. And I know it's, it's a lot of numbers, but what I really wanted to show, if you looked at that bottom line, if we did our current debt service today, the residual that we would receive over the life of the agency would be 79 million, 22 of which goes to the general fund. If we now do the defeasance with the last and final, that's actually an increase of 24 million, so that third, third column is going to show what, what the residual revenue will be. And the last column just shows that if we proceed with this, meaning it gets approved by you as the agency board, by the oversight board, and eventually by the Department of Finance, effective in 1920, we would be receiving 500,000. Just to inform the successor agency board, we have already missed that first allocation, meaning if, if we get it on the schedule, and I'll continue with my report, we will be able to get a portion of that 500,000 in 1920. For us to have actually been able to do this, we would have had to approve this three months ago, but when we were talking to the Department of Finance, because we were talking to them as early as January and February, unfortunately, their priority at the time were annual ROPS for agencies that still had those, so they would have pushed us anyway to the end of their priority list, because annual ROPS had to actually be to the county by April. So the required documents that have to be submitted to the Department of Finance and approved by this board is the resolution, the escrow agreement, and the requirement for us to show that there are savings is the debt service savings analysis, and what we added was the enhanced revenue report. So just for the board's benefit, our legal counsel, our redevelopment council, our bond counsel, our financial advisor, and our property tax consultant are here to answer any questions the board may have. They have worked hard to get everything together so that we're ready for this board and for the oversight board, which is going to happen on the 17th. And the city manager asked us that we extend that invitation to the agency board. This will be our first countywide oversight board presentation. The Grand Terrace Successor Agency has never been before them. We have been scheduled for the 17th. They haven't given us a time yet, because they do it by agency, and as soon as we have that, the city manager will inform you. At this time, are there any questions on the defeasance itself?
Thank you for your report. Any questions from the board members at this time? No?
Excellent. So we will move.
I'm going to open public comment, though, to see if there's anybody in the, in the public who'd like to comment on these items?
No, Madam Mayor.
No, all right. We'll bring it back to the board for consideration of a motion of the recommendation by staff. Board Member Allen?
I'm not ready to offer the recommendation, I just have a, something I want to discuss or ask, okay?
Sure.
I just want to make sure that anybody that's listening, I want to direct this to Ms. Fortune, okay, but I want to actually make sure that anybody that's out there in, listening on, to us online or however, understands what we're talking about, because, to be honest with you, I had to look up the meaning of the word defeasance. Okay? So I just want everyone out there to know what defeasance means. Please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I thought you were going to-
Please define the term defeasance.
I can explain it in layman's terms, but-
That'll work.
Do you, do you want to try?
I think that's probably best, anyway.
Defeating of the bonds is not, not using it for its intended use, returning it to the, paying our debt, and, yeah, letting it go, defeat.
So returning it to the bondholders?
Yes, well, paying the bondholders, yeah, what they're due and paying off the debt, yeah.
Okay, yeah. And so we have the, we have this bond money, 17 million or so-
Yes.
-in, in an account the state's tied up for us, as I understand it, in layman's terms. And is there any time in the foreseeable future that the state's ever going to say, you can have all this right now? No, is there?
None, and like you said, and I did not include a lot of history, because we've been taking this back, as you are aware, in 2011, in June of 2011, these bonds were issued with the hope of being able to use it for much-needed infrastructure in the city's redevelopment project area. Unfortunately, the Redevelopment Dissolution Act was enforced in February of 2012. Included in that was you can restrict, restriction to not use the bonds. Now, that's in 2011. Fast forward now, we're seven, eight years later, and that hasn't stopped the League of California Cities to try to go to see if they can negotiate anything. From a finance point of view, and I can also refer to legal counsel, we have heard talks of maybe a new redevelopment program that might be coming down the pipeline, but whether it's going to actually affect an issue that in 2011, I, remains to be seen, yeah.
Okay.
I will defer, is Mr., the city manager have any additional information?
Mr. City Manager?
No, I don't, what I do want to comment on, though, is, and this is really, as Councilman Allen said, for the public at home, the city of Grand Terrace was one of the first cities to be on board with closing out and doing the final, last and final ROPS. This, if the council approves this action tonight, we will be one of the, the countywide successor agency board, this would be the first time they've seen something like this, an item like this. And so it's extremely important that the public understands, is that the council is looking at ways to ensure that they manage their fiscal responsibility as best as they can. And so the action that the council is going to be taking is, you know, one of the first, as I said, one of the first actions like this that the countywide board has seen. And it is a prudent move by the council to do this, and it's, I think it's, it's the best way to maximize your existing resources.
So I'm still have the, the mic, right? My understanding, then, is that by defeating this, in other words, unwinding all these and, but we're still going to be receiving half, 500,000 annually, correct?
Yes, it's because you are defeating the bonds that the redevelopment tax increment will now float back into the regular tax, sort of the tax base, and you'll get your fair share of that.
Yes, and is there a time limit on that, or is it in perpetuity?
So once it starts, it will continue on.
Well, there's the, the schedule that goes out to 2030, 2032, 2033- Well, there's the schedule that goes out to 2030, 2032, 2033.
That's just because you couldn't...
No, it zeros out after that.
Well...
The additional.
Well, actually, yes. If you're looking at 32, 33, that 500 just gets added to the second column. So if you can see the general fund, it just goes from 1.6 to 2.1.
So it tucks back into our regular...
Yes.
Property tax.
No, it'll, yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fortune.
It's not considered an additional general fund, sure. I have one question, and I'll recognize you, Board Member Robles. Mr. City Attorney, if we are adopting this as the board right now, does it come back to us as council members as well?
It does not.
Okay. Board Member Robles?
Yeah, this, I was going to stay silent because I was wondering, this is the bad thing about when we have a discussion beginning last August, and you weren't on the council, and we had a very lengthy, numerous conversations about this. So it's not like today we're acting without the public not following along over this long process, but it says on September 25, 2018, we directed staff to proceed with the possibility, and they had to figure out how to do this because, again, we're the first ones doing it. But what this does is, unfortunately, we had bonds from 2011 that we were spending a lot of interest payments, debt service payments, and we weren't, we were legally constrained from spending any of the money on economic development. And I helped push this strongly because what it does is, it gives us back to our general fund forever at least 500,000. Because remember, RDAs take a tax increment. They take the growth of your property tax. So when you unwind it, defees it, you're returning it back to what part was the colleges, what part was the school districts, what part was the water district, what part is ours? So that's what we're doing, and of course, you know, I hope that, my hope is, again, in our budget discussions, we'll be talking about this new source of ongoing revenue.
And would you like to end that with a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to approve the recommendation. Items one and two.
All right. Thank you.
Second it.
All right, I have a motion by Board Member Robles, second by Board Member Allen. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Board Members Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Vice Chair Wilson voting yes, and Chair McNabb voting yes.
You're pointing to the screen.
Well, were you...
Did you not include something in your recommendations?
No. The presentation was only on the defeasance. I haven't done the last and final, however, just to summarize, the last and...
Mayor and council, and city attorney, I think if the council wants some clarification, we can do that, but the council approved the entire report.
That's correct. There were two recommendations, and both recommendations have been approved, including the last and final ROPS.
Thank you.
All right. All right, so we'll move to item nine, and you'll get to talk to us some more because we're reviewing an adopted budget for fiscal year 2019-20 and proposed adjustments. So Cynthia Fortune, Assistant City Manager, if you would, continue, please.
Yes, Mayor, and before Ms. Fortune starts, I did want to make a few comments about this particular item. On June 18, June 16, 2018, City Council approved a two-year budget for fiscal years 2018, 19, and 1920. Yet because most budgets are a projection of revenue and expenses, a two-year budgets are especially prone to adjustments after the first year. Adjustments can occur because of new revenue, unexpected expenses, or program expansions. Tonight's 2019, 2019-20 budget adjustment encompassed all of the previous elements mentioned. As is customary, the city managers presenting approved an adjustment for the approved balance, for an approved balanced budget. The council or policymakers shall receive the report and determine and make any changes or adjustments as the body deems necessary. And so with that, Ms. Fortune is ready to present the budget.
As the city manager had said, it is a review of the 1920 and an introduction to the proposed adjustments. So our 2030 vision and goals, vision and goals are to ensure our fiscal solvency, maintain public safety, promote economic development, develop and implement successful partnerships, and engage in proactive communication. As the city manager had mentioned, the, we adopted a two-year budget in June of last year to improve financial management, to provide a greater emphasis on management and service delivery, to provide a greater emphasis on program evaluation and monitoring, to improve long range and strategic planning, and to reallocate and redeploy resources to other essential programs other than budgeting. So the adopted budget supports the city's mission, vision, and core values. It maintains the current level of service with focus on public safety and economic development. The adopted budget does not require the use of fund balance, and it recognizes the strong economic recovery in the city and strategically invests in the city's future. So in relation to the proposed revenue and expenditures, here are the revenue adjustments that we are proposing. As I've mentioned in an earlier report, because we missed the first allocation that normally comes for the June and December, what our actual projection is, based on the schedule we are, we are hoping to catch the January distribution, meaning this should be all defeasted and completed by September, giving the county a couple of months to get ready. I am projecting that we will be receiving 210 of that 500,000 that we think we would be getting from residual receipts. Now, from the proceeds, from the sale of property, this was proceeds that we actually received in 2018, 19, and when I discussed this with the city manager, there are properties that might be sold within, but what we would do is just come back in a separate report and report that to council, so I'm taking it out of the operating budget. Now, we have some minor increases just based on what we've been seeing the last 10 months. As far as miscellaneous, we actually received a one-time revenue for the change from regular streetlights to LED lights, and this was a one-time savings that we got in 1819 and not in 1920. And the use of money property, I'm increasing by 35,000. Because of the transfer of the 15% in bond proceeds, it's actually increased the amount of interest earned by the general fund. Now, the residual receipts from the senior center, we did receive 60,000 one time, and that was actually two fiscal years ago, and we have not received it since. So I'm trying to be very conservative. If we do receive it, then that will include our actuals, but at this point, I'm just taking it out because we have not seen it in the last two years. And so we have proposed increased revenue of about 103,000, and we have proposed expenditure adjustments totaling about 107,000. And the net is still, we are not going to require the use of fund balance with these additional adjustments. So I just wanted to point out the detailed expenditure requests. The first one is for the city manager's office. Since the silver liner and the senior bus are under the city manager, what we are requesting is to increase the bus driver hours by two hours each day. Since we've had the silver liner, the increase in wanting to use the bus has increased tremendously. Unfortunately, it can only do a, it can only do 14 passengers. The additional hours will actually be, allow her to do two trips when they do their excursions and give them also sufficient time to be able to come, to come and go and attend the lunch at the senior center. For the finance department, finance department is requesting that the budget officer slash principal accountant be, return its funding full-time. This was a position that was approved by city council in 1819, but again, we had a principal accountant who was working part-time at the time, so we only funded it part-time. She has given our notice, and she has decided that she started working more hours, so I am requesting to fund this back full-time. And our, the other request that we're submitting for is the live modeling application. Gov Invest is a new company. They started a little over five years ago. They actually took the CalPERS model, made it their own, and tweaked it. So they are a sole source, and the principal accountant and I met with them a few weeks ago. What this model allows a city to do is actually provide live numbers. So if council wanted to know what our unfunded accrued liability was today, instead of relying on CalPERS, which is two years old, we would be able to provide you with that information. And it is live today, tomorrow, next month. On top of that, the same software, if you say, I'd like to propose half a percent increase, 1% increase, I can calculate you, I can calculate what the increase in cost may be. This will actually calculate what the increase in purse will be, what the increase will be on other post-employment benefits, and the increase on the unfunded liability. Because this is a, this is a topic that does concern us quite a bit, I thought this would be beneficial so that if council wanted a report once a quarter on what the actual liability is, we would be able to provide that. So that's what that, this software would do. And then our last request was to increase the benefit allowance for city employees in order to keep up with increased costs in healthcare. We are proposing to increase the employee's benefit allowance by 50 a pay period or $100 a month, so it's 1,200 per employee. And again, because it is benefit allowance, this will not increase the city's pension liability or unfunded accrued liability. So the total request, again, is 107,000, but we have sufficient revenues to cover that increase in requests. So the proposed adjustments, you know, maintain necessary resources to implement the city's 2030 vision. It more effectively reflects the departmental costs. It maintains a structurally balanced budget, and as the city manager and I have stated, it does not require or the use of fund balance. So items for future discussion, as stated in the staff report, is we would bring back the memorandum of understanding with the city of West Hollywood for the exchange of unallocated Rule 28 funds. And again, this entails a transfer of 200,000. In return, the city's general fund would receive 110,000. I think the prior presentation was 100,000, and it's now been up to 110. And again, this is a discussion at the next meeting. And also, at the next meeting, we will be providing the city council with a 10-year financial forecast of both revenue and expenditures and what that would look like, so the city council has an idea. So for the budget scheduling, these were the original dates that we are proposing. Our planning and development services director is reminding me that on Thursday, June 6, we do have a planning commission meeting, and that commission meeting will include a workshop on environmental impact reports. So I don't know if the city council would still want to have the budget in the park on that day. And if there are any dates that city council would like us to change or update to just let us know, this is just a tentative budget schedule. However, budget adoption would be on our last meeting, just to let everyone know, June 25 is our last day. If they approve the, it would be adoption for the proposed adjustments. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions city council may have.
Before we get into questions, will you please define, on page 245, under non-departmental expenditures, will you define the non-departmental? I noticed there's a 707,809, and that the overhead cost allocation is, is less than that, projected to be less than that, but will you define what the non-departmental expenditures are?
Non-depart, yes, Mayor, I'm sorry. Non-departmental costs are costs that are incurred by the city that we do not attribute to any particular department. So utilities that are paid by the general fund will fall under this. Our workers' comp liability, our regular liability insurance falls under this. The pension amount that we pay our prior city manager, I do put under non-departmental because it's a huge cost. I can put it under city manager, but it just skews that operating budget, yeah. Those are some of the big costs that actually encompass this. Our leases of our big machines are actually big photocopying machines, yeah. Anything that we don't break up to a specific department falls under non-departmental.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robles, you have a question?
I do a couple. One is, you're doing budget introduction, then there's two budget in the parks, and then budget deliberations if necessary. So I'm kind of at loss when we're doing our budget deliberations, number one. Number two, how many people show up to these budget in the park events? And let me, let me say what an issue I have with this. So we do two budget in the parks, and then individual council members go to that. So it kind of gets into, again, you know, this, this policy and procedures other councils have. Other councils have, this is supposed to be outreach that staff does. So when there's going to be deliberations, it's actually done here in the chambers. So I guess what I'm looking for is how many budget in the parks we do, and maybe we ought to do a thing where two council members want to cover one and what, you know, and two want to cover another one, and then that way, they're listening, okay, but there's not, you know, three of them there, kind of thing. But I just, again, why are budget deliberations if necessary? Because where are we going to be doing it? You know, it doesn't, it doesn't say. Is it going to be in our priorities workshop?
I apologize. Councilmember Robles, the Tuesday, June 11, that's a regular council meeting, yeah.
Yeah, but so the budget deliberations if necessary?
Yes, and what that really should be is that it's, it, those are those two items you referenced, we're doing the 10-year forecast, there'll be separate staff reports for you guys, along with the Rule 28. There'll be two separate staff reports that you would then take that information as a part of your overall budget discussion.
Yeah, but we're not going to do, in budget introduction, is that where you want us to have the discussion on budget priorities?
No, your budget priorities are scheduled for June 12.
Okay, so I go back to budget deliberations if necessary. We have to have a place where we're formally deliberating on the budget.
Councilmember Robles, you're correct. The phrase "if necessary" should not have been there.
Okay.
Yes, that will be a separate staff report that would say, continue budget deliberations.
Okay.
That schedule that we have on page 246 that you were just referring to, Councilmember Robles, the budgets in the park and the budget deliberations and the priority workshop after that, I'm wondering if that priority workshop ought to be before the budget deliberations. That's just an observation I'm having, not particularly a question for Ms. Fortune. However, one of the other observations I have is that I'm a little bit concerned over here on page 245, under the adjustments, the paragraph down here. The top bullet comment says, maintain the city's current staffing level to ensure the staff can provide adequate levels of service and core function areas. And I'm going to refer back to Mr. Duffy's earlier comment about capacity. Are we at capacity right now? Because if we're trying to maintain staffing levels and, but we continue to bring on more agenda items, for lack of a better term for it, more projects, more, I mean, do we have this? Are we at capacity when it comes to...
Well, I think we're...
Well, I think we're at, I think we're at the point now, in order to, to do things well, we, we're at capacity. But what that doesn't mean is, the council sets that priority. If there's something that we're working on and something else comes up that's more important, we need to have that conversation with the council because capacity doesn't mean you don't take on anything new. Capacity means something else slides or something else goes up, takes priority.
Okay, okay. And another thing that I really think about often is, and, you know, we have a few, not many, but we have a couple of long-term employees in our, in our, in our city, and others that we hope will be someday, long-term employees. I would like for our city to be a place where people strive to come to work at and want to come to work at, and are, and don't come here and then start looking to leave because we aren't able to compensate them, you know, competitively, to be able to maintain, you know, an adequate and a well-trained staff level here. And so I just want to make sure that in this budget deliberations that we come, that we, because we have some folks here that were furloughed for years and brought back and were denied that seniority, and that's not right. I mean, I think that we need to make sure that we, that our employees are adequately compensated in all aspects, in all areas. And that's all I have to say.
All right. Further questions? Please hold. Councilmember Robles, are questions from Pro Tem or Hussey?
Not really a question, mayor, but, and I appreciate the, the, the description of the non-departmental, and I kind of took that for granted. But I do know they have cost codes, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
So if they have cost codes, or that they're, in other words, they're in a pew. And what we're doing here is we're using, we're calling it a non-departmental, which would be a general category. What I'd like to see is, since of the, it's seven hundred thousand dollars, which is better than 10% of our budget, I'd like to see a breakdown.
Yes, we can provide that to the city council.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Robles?
Yes, I don't see in here anything about COLAs, because I, or anything having to do with what our employee situation is, is, if we, I know the City of Upland, I just accidentally read, they haven't had cost of livings for 11 years, so we're not the only city, and, and maybe we need to have a discussion on that. I also think our time would be more well-spent, given that we have to have some really strong discussions about our capacity. Because I understood clearly before this meeting that the sheriff had said that without additional resources, we're at capacity there. So I wasn't trying to single anybody out. I'm trying to say is that we have to have, not a piecemeal discussion, or I, you know, somebody made a comment. We have to have a strong discussion. I'd rather see us do the priorities workshops and some budget deliberations, and if folks are interested, they can come, come here. We have the, the television, we have streaming, all these things you don't have at, at a, at a public park. I mean, I, I think the amount of attendance doesn't warrant that. I think we have more on our plate that we need to, to focus here in the, in this, in this chambers and with, with all of us present.
Can I, can I say something to that? I think having a budget in the park is a fine workshop for the public because it, it creates a more casual atmosphere for them to interact with city staff. And to me, that was the understanding, is to not make it so difficult to approach as far as discussion. As far as the budget deliberations, I'm getting the understanding that there's quite a bit more that's going to be going on at that particular meeting, not just deliberations. We're going to be given a presentation that shows us a forecast 10 years out, and you were mentioning something else. To me, I want to see that before I start looking at priorities.
Well, and mayor and council, what you'll see, and these are the comments that we've heard from the council throughout the year, you're going to see a 10-year revenue forecast that's tied to potential future projects. You're going to see a 10-year expenditure program, and it's going to address the issue of, is there a COLA there? You know, you, you have adopted some very strenuous budget guidelines that include no COLA, that include employees do not get a merit step increase when they, when they pass. Those are the adopter rules that we have right now. So during this, during the discussion, we'll be looking at that. And you also have, as part of the discussion, your liabilities. So you'll have listed all your liabilities, your potential revenue and your potential expenditures. The priority workshop, actually, based upon my understanding, is not going to be held in the council chambers. The goal was to have it in the community room, so where the public would feel more, more comfortable, there'd be more interaction as we went through the items. This is the proposal. If the council wants to rearrange this, adjust that, this is really up to you, and we will, we will make those adjustments accordingly.
Councilmember Robles?
Okay, so was it 2010 or something that these no COLAs, no merit increases were instituted? What year was it?
I, I can only surmise, I wasn't here, but I thought they were saying it was 10 years ago.
Yeah, so that, so that...
Yeah, no, there was, I wasn't even on the council. You know, the, so you're saying, you know, you have a policy from, I don't have a policy. The previous council had a policy.
No, Councilperson Robles, when we adopt the budget every year, there are policies associated with that. And based on the last budget that was adopted, it said, "In order to balance this budget, you can't have any COLAs, you can't do any merit step increases." That was put in, actually, for a number of years, and that's been, that's been, that was put in before I actually arrived, and we've just continued on with that process.
The reason I says, in 2010, I know that that council had to do a lot of layoffs. I wasn't privy to those closed-door sessions. So it's difficult, you know, without being privy to a closed-door session on a policy, and there's only one person on this council from 2010. And then, so, so, you know, I just have to say, I really misunderstood when you're saying, I, what I heard in the budget presentations was, we're going to go to a, a full work week, and people are going to be able to progress through their salary steps. And so this is what we're going to say. So I think we spend more time on touchy-filly things, the budget in the park, you know, where, how many people showed up at each of those?
It could range from seven to, I think, one time we had maybe 15 at the max.
Okay, so, I don't know, what, but I think we need a consensus, how many want budget in the park? Because I think we need to have a stronger discussion using your, you know, staff resources and your capacity, instead of serving hot dogs at a park and everybody running around doing those touchy-filly things, that we need to have a strong policy discussion with the council, and that, and that we have a full plate. And these things are nice to do, but we're a city that's so tiny. You know, I don't see the difference of being at a park two blocks away or versus being in here.
Okay.
Mr. City Manager, let me interject. I, I think, I think what you were trying to explain before...
Oops, sorry.
I didn't say that. I, I believe what you were talking about is anytime you put a budget together, you have to have a certain set of assumptions. And that's really what, what they were. And when you talk about assumptions that might be based on the last budget, it would be a continuation of the assumptions that were, I guess you'd call them policy, to begin with, and they had been continued forward, you know, time after time after time after time. So you can't create a budget without assumptions, period. And I believe what Councilwoman Robles is talking about is, is that we, we feel a strong obligation to get our assumptions really tight this round, so that that way, you know, if there's any question about some things that have been continued in the past and their old policies, then we've got them all out in the open, and we're going to...
And that's exactly why we're having this discussion, because I, I want to point out that we had those policies that rolled over every year. Well, we focused on what, we focused on balancing the budget, but what, the results of that, you balance the budget and you had these policies that rolled over. So part of the discussion with the, with the 10-year forecast and, and the liabilities and the policy discussion, so all that has to occur, so the council says, moving forward, this is what our revenue projections include, this is what our expenditures include. And, and so that's, that's the whole point of saying, these are the policies that we have rolled over from year to year, but, but I want you to really get a real picture in terms of revenue, expenditures, liability, and policies. And that's, that'll be part of the major discussion.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, for taking over. Councilmember Allen? Okay. Any further questions at this time? All right, we'll open it up to public comment. Are there any requests to speak?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We'll bring it back. And so you're just looking for us to give direction towards the next meeting, correct?
And, okay, the schedule.
So what decisions were made on the schedule? Do we need to, do we need to change any of these dates?
The question, a question had come up in relation to the, the budget in the parks and whether they had been useful.
The one that I attended last year in the fitness park seemed to get a group of people that I had not seen come out for events like that before. I, I'm not sure about the other one. Councilmember Allen?
So, thank you. I've, I attended the budgets in the parks, I've attended the budgets in the senior center, and I've attended budget discussions in various locations throughout the city over the years. And while there generally is not a large turnout for those, I think it's important that we make that opportunity available, you know, to the folks and, at least a couple of times, you know, and, but I'm, I'm wondering about this priority workshop and if this is something that's really, I mean, we have a couple of dozen big projects, you know, either going on or going to be started soon, and we've made priorities already. I just, I'm concerned that we're going to be changing things around and causing confusion on staff. I mean...
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. I, my comment to that is that once we hear these forecasts that we're going to be given, we might be in a position where we need to change around our, our directions and our priorities. So I, I think that going into the priority workshop, it's very important for us to have a lot of information and then look at what we have currently and decide whether that is the way that we should be giving direction to proceed, or whether we do need to make So I'll just put it up to council right now. Budget in the park? Yes, no?
About one.
All right. All right, I'm hearing one. So if we have a meeting on June 6th, that's a planning commission meeting, then that's probably the one that we don't have. Location, I'll leave up to council to decide, but, but that way we don't split priorities for, for staff, and also, we don't have to make the public choose.
You'll leave it up to the staff to decide the location?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Okay, and as far as the budget deliberations and the, the presentations we'll be giving on the 11th, is everybody okay with the priority workshop being on June 12th?
And the location being in the community?
And the location being in the community. Okay. I'm seeing yes. And so then we will have a, one last time to talk about it on June 25th?
Yes, and, and the thing is with that, mayor, if the, if there is a continued discussion that has to occur after the 25th, you can continue the meeting, we just have to get the budget adopted before June 30th, the end of June 30th.
Okay. Very good. So then we will move to item H, which is request for future agenda items. We have four items to request. Again, we will not deliberate on the specifics of it, but we will, are bringing these forward to be considered for future items on our agenda. And so what we will be looking for is a motion and a second on each of these items. We'll take them one at a time. The first one is cost effectiveness of paperless agenda versus printed agenda packets. And Councilmember Robles, you brought that forward. Is there anything that you would like to say about it?
Yeah, I would say I'd like to withdraw that and make it part of the budget discussion.
Okay. Will do. Move on to storm drain master plan. Mayor Pro Tem, you brought that one forward. Do you want to say anything about that?
I think as it has been pointed out in the past, it's important for us to continue our work on the, on, to get to the point, at least, is to have a master plan for the storm drain. But I have seen some work in the last week in relation to the, our partnership with Lewis in relation to their project, and some upstream data. And I think if we continue that work, as staff continues that work, we should be able to shortcut it, not only in our expense, but also get, get into the real world about how our storm drain system works, especially the stuff that goes down in the last two main streets that go east and west. So...
So do you want to bring this back as an agenda item?
Yes.
Okay, so there, there's your motion, and is there a second for Mayor Pro Tem?
I'll second it.
Okay, so please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor Magna voting yes.
Thank you. All right, item three is cost to assigned traffic officer at least once a month at various times and locations throughout the city for enforcement. Councilmember Hussey, that's yours.
Well, if we could, we could put that on the budget deliberation also, instead of having an agenda.
Okay. And lastly, homeowner landscape recognition. Councilmember Allen?
That wasn't particularly something that I wanted staff to delve into, you know, mayor. I just thought it was something that we as council members could accomplish on our own, not, whatever we can do. Like the recognition that we did tonight was something I totally did on my own, and staff didn't have to get involved in it too much.
Okay, do we, but, but do we need to talk about a process for how that would happen? And that, and maybe that would be what would come back?
Oh, if we wanted to continue it on?
If we wanted to make it a regular feature?
Like quarterly or something like that.
That's fine.
Okay, so, so you still want it to come back?
If that's what it needs to make it happen, then that'll be fine.
Okay, so there's your motion?
Yes.
And Councilmember Robles, do I hear a second out of you? All right, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor Magna voting yes.
Thank you, and we will move next to city manager communication.
Thank you, mayor. As my PowerPoint comes on board. I can share with the council that on Saturday, June 1st, 2019, the city's Community Day will, okay, here we go. So the Community Day, Saturday, June 1st, from 3:00 to 9:00 p.m. Note the time change. There'll be food, fun, and entertainment at Richard Rollins Park. The program includes quite a bit of activities. One will be, we actually have a community workshop at the actual event to bring back the Terrace Hills Middle School pool. Prop 68 is a $4 billion grant that the state of California has regarding programs for park and recreations, flood control, and various other activities. The city will be competing for a two, at least a $2.6 million grant to try and refurbish the Terrace Hills Middle School. And one of the important components of this particular grant is, they want to get community acti, community participation in the design. So everything's on the table. We're going to be at, at Community Day, and we're going to be asking people to contribute and comment on what they would like to see the Terrace Hills Middle School's pool look like in the future. The next particular item is the Taste of Terrace. So as most people know, we have quite a bit of different types of food choices in Grand Terrace. We have La Pasta Italia, Odoberto's, Thai Kitchen, Cos Ramen, Woody's Classic Grill, Antonio's Pizza, Mongolian Barbecue, and the Sweet Life Bakery. All of those organizations or restaurants will be at Community Day, and they'll be providing little samples, very cheap and expensive samples, for the community to come out and taste. And we'll also have the Silver Liner there, and the Silver Liner will be making trips to those restaurants throughout the, throughout the evening and bringing people back. So this is the Taste of Terrace. We've got a great support from all the, the businesses. They want to come and share some of their particular items, and it's going to be really a, a good event. That event only lasts from 3:00 to 4:00, so we encourage you to get there early if you want to taste the Taste of Grand Terrace. Next, we have the Grand Terrace Community Day Craft Corner. This is really local people making... This is really local people making crafts and items that you would normally buy on the Internet. You get a chance to actually buy those items in the craft corner. I think we have nine to 12 participants in this particular corner. This project's actually sponsored by Riverside Corona Resource Conservation District, so they are sponsoring the tent that's being put up and housing the craft makers. I also want to jump back here. The Taste of Grand Terrace is actually sponsored by the Lewis Group, and they're supporting the tent that's going up to house a particular activity. Then next, we have the Grand Terrace Rodeo. This is really a, an opportunity for nonprofits to convince a local rider to ride on their behalf. Lieutenant Wolf is actually going to be the sponsor, the ringleader of running that bull.
The ringleader?
Activity. The program's actually sponsored by Burt Tech. It's a mechanical bull, and what we're doing is we're asking that nonprofits in the city to have a rider ride. If, there'll be three rounds of riding. The winner of the rodeo will actually receive $200 for their nonprofit. So we're looking for local nonprofits. You don't have to be a part of that nonprofit to be the rider for that nonprofit. So we're hoping that we're going to have at least 15 to 20 riders. And Lieutenant Wolf is actually bringing in, I believe, a world champion rodeo rider to be the judge of the actual activity.
Interesting.
All right. Also, at the end of the evening, we're going to be having a movie in the park sponsored by Fiesta Village. Ralph Breaks the Internet starts at 8:00 p.m. at Richard Rollins Park. So we have really a complete fun-filled, compact day. Now, there'll be over 40 booths at the event that just deal with local nonprofits, talking about their particular program. There'll be lots of fun and entertainment, including the traveling homeboys, professional band, the high school band, dance dimensions, lots of activities by local entertainment. And so we hope you come out for the event from 3:00 to 9:00 p.m. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Okay, so our next item is a closed session. We will be recessing to closed session. Thank you to those of you who came out tonight. And if you are not here when we return, our next regular scheduled city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, June 11th, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. And any requests you have to place an item on future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with city council procedures. Our closed session tonight is a conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. Properties are 22317 Barton Road, APN 1167-231-01, 22273 Barton Road, APN 1167-231-02, and 22293 Barton Road, APN 1167-311-01. City negotiators, G. Harold Duffy, city manager, Adrian Guerra, city attorney. Negotiating parties, Greens Group Incorporated and Under Negotiation is the price and terms of payment. At this time, we are in recess. We'll reconvene to open session. Council met in closed session. Conference with real proper negoti, property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. Properties 22317 Barton Road, APN 1167-231-01, 22273 Barton Road, APN 1167-231-02, 22293 Barton Road, APN 1167-311-01. City negotiator, G. Harold Duffy, city manager, and city negotiator, Adrian Guerra, city attorney. Negotiating parties, Green Group Incorporated. Under negotiation was price and terms of payment. We have no reportable action at this time, but we did give direction to staff. And so we will adjourn to our next regular city council meeting that will be held Tuesday, June 11th, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. Any request to have an item placed on future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with city council procedures. We are adjourned.